Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, everyone. Hopefully with this weather coming in, we don't have any technical problems with the internet or anything else. So, all right, the first thing I want to go through is roll call. Thomas Warren's here. Mr. Young, I saw you here. President. Okay, you're here. Mr. Mandel.
I s- I s-
President. Okay, Mr. Mandel is here. Mr. Sweeney? I see Sweeney. Mr. Dell.
Yes, sir.
I see. Okay, Mr. Andrews.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Andrews is here. Mr. McCory.
McCory's here.
Mr. McCory's here, and Mr. Bond. Okay, we have a full board tonight. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, first item on the agenda is Three Tweed Boulevard Site Plan PB 21-08. Mr. Gaddance, is that you?
How you doing?
Good, 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 sir.
Last we were before the board, I think we went through everything, and the only remaining item was the measurements of the patio, which we had placed on the plan, and we submitted the new plan to the tax committee.
Okay, and I think the only other thing is that the board also wanted you to put hay bales with the silt fence.
Yeah, we agreed to that. I don't, I don't, let me see, I believe you did that.
I don't see them on the plans.
Uh... Hold on, I'm looking.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, who is that? Mr. Dell, yes?
Yes, sir. Well, there is a standard construction detail on the left-hand side of the page, and a very small note along the many, along the downslope side out in the middle. It says hay bale barrier, and the construction detail, standard construction detail.
The plan I have has the detail on it, and it's, and it's there.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let me go through the consultant's reports, and Mr. Gaddance, if you have anything, you can let me know.
Sure.
The project review has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for this project. Office of Building Zoning and Management, April 30th, Jane Slavin. She has four items. Now, as of April 30th, she was still concerned with the, number two, the plan has not been updated per my February 8th letter. The plan must include dimensions on the proposed patio.
Yeah, that was, that was done, and new plans were submitted and provided to her.
Okay, thank you very much. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, dated April 16th. They have eight items. Okay, Booker Engineering, May 11th. The applicant has provided significant information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Three Tweed Boulevard Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are five. Okay, um, Town of Orange Town Bureau of Fire Prevention, May 4th letter. Does the Bureau of Fire Prevention has no comments at this time. Rockland County Department of Planning, January 20th, 2021. They have six comments. I also have a letter from Thomas Scrable, Consultant Engineering, and it's in respect to the letters and conditions that we had set last meeting. I also have a note from the Rockland County Division of Environmental Resources saying, dated 4/11/21, we require, we've, no further correspondence for the site will be sent to this agency. And I believe that's all I have. Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, um... Let's go to the board members. Mr. Young?
Uh, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandel?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
No comments at this time.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Mr. Dell?
Yes, just a quick question from Ms. Slavin. Are you, you're comfortable with this, and you feel the building inspectors would have no problem seeing the detail on the hay bale and the small notation, so that they'd adequately be able to verify this and also know that it's a requirement?
Okay, right now, Ms. Slavin is having some computer issues.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm calling it on my phone.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Dell, the building inspectors are very familiar with the hay bale requirements, and there will be a pre-construction meeting before a permit will be issued.
Yes, I, I didn't mean to say they weren't familiar with it. I just wanted to make sure the way it was depicted on the plan, it was easy to verify for them. Okay, but thank you very much. That was all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrew?
No comments right now.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCory?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Looks like they updated the plans to meet all concerns from the last meeting, so I'm, I'm good with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Bond?
I'm good with it also.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I want to open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to, uh, any input on this application? Okay, one more time. Does anybody from the public wish to make any comments on this application? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion to close the public's-
Motion to close the public portion, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews makes a-
Mr. Mandel second.
I think Mr. Mandel's seconding.
Mr. Mandel's second.
Okay, thank you, sir. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, um, I need a motion for final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions, Mr. Mandel.
I don't know that we did lead agent.
Motion for final conditions. Okay, conditions are?
Tom, you need to do the secret.
Okay, thank you very much, Cheryl. Okay, I need a motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agent.
Mr. Mandel makes a motion for a lead agent. Do I have a second on lead agent? Mr. McCory makes a second for lead agent. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? No opposition. Okay, uh, motion for a neg deck?
Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel makes a motion for a neg deck. Do I have a second?
Mr. Andrews seconds.
Mr. Andrews second. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Any, any opposed? Okay.
I see no opposition.
Excuse me, excuse me, it's, it's very hard to understand which property you're talking about.
We're talking about Three Tweed Boulevard?
Okay, apologies then.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um... I think I have a more final, if I believe, I, I think Mr. Mandel made it, am I correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and the conditions, um, PRC has one. Jane Slavin, April 30th, has four. Department of Environmental Management, April 16th. Booker Engineering, May 11th, they have five. Bureau of Fire Prevention, May 4th, they have none. Rockland County Planning, January 20th, they have six. And that is all. Do I have a second for final? Okay, Mr. Young makes a second for final. Okay, all in favor? With an aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No opposition. Okay, sir, you got your final.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yes, you too. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Okay, uh, next is Rockland County Club Site Plan PB 21-28.
Hi, good evening. This is Sarah Murray. I'm here on behalf of Dominic Pillar Associates, representing the Rockland County Country Club.
Okay, very good. Would you like to tell us what you have, what's going on?
Sure. So, the, this application is for a site plan for the removal of two existing fuel tanks that are on the property. So, this is the maintenance building, which is located on Route 340. They have two tanks, one which is below grade, a gasoline tank, and they have an above-grade diesel tank that's located within the garage building. Both of these tanks are proposed to be removed and replaced with two above-ground tanks. So, there's two new tanks that are going to be going in. We had received comments from, from Jane Slavin regarding some zoning issues. This tank actually has moved slightly from the set of plans that you might have in front of you. We, we do, we did resubmit a revised set, but unfortunately, they just got out to Cheryl yesterday, so I'm not sure if anyone has had a chance to review that. But essentially, the new location of the tanks is now pushed back from the road. It's about 93 foot from the property line, and this is now located on the northern side of the existing garage building, which is kind of between the two garages, if you're looking at Site Plan C101. The original location was immediately to the left of the entry, and now this has been pushed back to the back of the existing parking area between the two existing structures.
Okay, thank you. Let me go through the consultant's reports. If you have any questions while I'm going through this, please stop me, and then we can discuss them. Project review has one comment. Project PRC recommends that the planning board address comment number two of the Town of Orange Town Department of Environmental Management and Engineering memorandum dated May 20th, 2021. This information must be provided by the applicant on the plans. Okay, um, Office of Buildings Zoning and Planning, Jane Slavin, dated May 18th. And she has five comments. Okay, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, dated May 10th. Okay. They have seven. Number two, it says the existing and the proposed, if equitable, grading shall be shown on the drawing. Ms. Slavin, are you there to clarify this a little bit?
Well, the, I think the applicant should clarify that, but the grading is existing. And also, as the applicant mentioned at the introduction, they provided a revised plan that we received yesterday that has an all, all-new location for the tanks. So, the board has not had the opportunity to see that. So, my recommendation at this time would be that the applicant should request a continuation so that the board has time to review the plan, revised plan that was received yesterday.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. All right, with that being said, let me go with the rest of the comments, and then we will see what happens after that, okay? Like I said, the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, May 10th, has seven comments. Booker Engineering, May 4th. Uh, the proposed action will not result in any significant increase in stormwater runoff or changes in the drainage patterns that require mitigation. We therefore recommend that the Rockland County Club Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to no condition. Again, as Ms. Slavin has said, that the new plans that you submitted have different gradings and different, have some changes in it. So, I believe that Booker has gonna, is gonna have to relook at this to see if there's any, any problems with it.
Yeah, if I, if I might just say, so the existing parking lot, the grading there is, is very gradual. There's not much changes in slope. All of the proposed work is within the existing paved area. It's not within any sort of grass or impervious area, or pervious area, sorry. So, you know, the positioning change, obviously, it has to be reviewed, but in terms of, of the overall scope of the work, it really hasn't changed.
Okay, well, that's not up for us to determine. That's up to our consultants to determine if there's any changes whatsoever and what corrections you have to make. Okay?
Understood. The revised set of plans included responses to all of the comments that we've received to date. So, we, we believe that we have responded to all of that, but obviously, we will let the board review.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the Town of Orange Town Bureau of Fire Prevention, May 14th. They have a total of four comments. Rockland County Department of Planning, dated April 30th. They have three comments. Excuse me. Rockland County Drainage Agency, May 3rd. A steam control act permit from the DEC is not requested. Uh, Rockland County Sewer District Number One, April 29th, they have three comments. We have a letter from, uh, your pillar, I guess, consultant engineers. I'm sorry if I pronounced it wrong. Please forgive me.
That's all right.
Just respond to some of the comments. So, I have the short EAF. I have a letter from Orange Town ZBA, dated 4/11. You consent, uh, Orange Town Planning Board to be lead agent. I have a letter from Orange Town ZBA. No further correspondence for this site should be sent to this agency. I have dated May 22nd from Rockland County Planning Department. That consent to, consent to Orange Town Planning serve as lead agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Division of Environmental, 4/26, consenting Orange Town Planning Lead Agent. A letter from Rockland County Highway, dated 4/26, say no comments at this time. And, and that's it. Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, up to the board. Mr. Young?
So, we, we do not have the updated plans, correct? So, uh, Ms. Murray, is, are these tanks for golf carts or lawn equipment, combination of both?
A, a combination of both.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Mr. Mandel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Regarding the Bureau of Fire Prevention Number One, on your revised plans, did you increase the separations between the tanks to three feet?
Yes, it's been increased.
Okay, secondly, uh, how could you describe your procedure or what you're going to do in order to contain any leaks that might occur from the tanks, such as a concrete with a liner beneath them?
So, there's actually some information given in the letter that was submitted yesterday to respond to the comments, because it was my understanding that some of the, the questions from the engineering department were with concerns about leaks as well. So, there are a few things. The, the tanks themselves are double-walled, so there's an interior tank that holds the fuel, and there's a second, uh, secondary containment on the outer layer that would contain any potential leaks should the interior tank fail. There's also something that's referred to as a spill bucket that's located at the fill connection to prevent, you know, any sort of spills that might occur during filling of the tanks themselves. And in addition, there is an overflow protection valve within the, the fill pipe, which prevents the tank from being overfilled beyond a certain amount of its total capacity. And in addition to that, should it be, should it overflow beyond that, there's another chamber that can catch additional liquid. So, I, I had reviewed this with the, the, the company who's going to be installing the tanks. It has a lot of firsthand knowledge of the way that the tanks work. And, you know, the, the combination of these multiple different safety features really creates a minimal risk of, of leaks.
No further at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Sweeney?
Oh, I'm good with the comments from our experts, and I'm ready to see the revised plans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know the country club has a history of being very proactive environmentally, and we've had a number of situations of tanks like this. And times in the past, what we have requested, I assume these tanks, first of all, are going to be on some sort of a concrete platform. Is that true?
They're on a concrete pad.
All right. Okay, well, what we requested many times, and certainly would be my very strong request, is that you have a wall on this to prevent any spillage. And underneath the concrete, you place, you place a heavy plastic membrane just in case there's any expansion, traction fractures, et cetera, within the pit. It's rather simple, but it would serve as a belt and suspenders approach that in case anything were to happen there, that would be taken care of. Soon, there'll be some sort of security fence around this?
Yeah, the, the existing property is fenced in, and there's a gate that only allows access during certain hours. So, there's not access from the public there.
No, I understand, but you never know, you know? The other thing is that the bollards, I don't know how many you have placed there. I assume it's more than adequate to prevent any, uh, any collisions, damage from any potential collisions of any trucks or vehicles in the area.
Yeah, there's, I don't remember the center-to-center spacing. I can, I can have that added to the plans, but yeah, they're, they're spaced fairly closely, so there shouldn't be an issue of vehicle impact.
Okay, is this going to be near the parking lot itself?
It's in their maintenance parking lot, yes.
Okay, well, I suggest some sort of fence or something to prevent any piling of snow or snow damage. I don't think it's going to happen. But again, I think always to go on the side of caution.
In addition to the bollards?
Yes, something between them, because some snow might get in there inadvertently, et cetera. But, you know, the others might have other opinions. I always on these things go towards extreme caution.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews?
I have no comments at this time. Just would like to see the new plans on this.
Thank, thank you, sir. Mr. McCory?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the old plan, so that's, I'd like to see the new plans. But just, I like the fact that you increased the three-foot distance between the tanks that five eventually wanted. Um, how far away from the nearest building are these tanks?
Um, in the new location, hold on, I have this dimension on here. Bear with me one second. Um, it's about 56 feet from the, the closest corner of the building.
All right, so it's even further than on the plans we had on the building? Were the original was 46 feet or close to that?
That sounds right, yes. Yeah, it's a little bit further.
Do you have the plans on your screen? Can you, can you share them or?
Oh, yeah, am I able to, am I able to do that?
Well, Mr. McCory, I'd really-
They're gonna, they're gonna have to come back.
Until we have them and the whole board can review them?
All right, I just want to see if she, because we're asking a lot of question about where it is. If we, if we saw it on the screen, we'd have a better idea. But if the plans are coming back, we'll take a look at it next time, I guess. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bond, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, um, I'm gonna open it up to the public and see if there's any, any, any public comments on this. Everybody from the public, any questions or comments on this? I know if somebody goes, let me just finish, these are the plans that will be discussed. The applicant is, is submitting a new set of plans. So, any, in, in respective details on the existing plans that were submitted really are, you know, aren't equitable, because we're getting a new set of plans. So, I just want you to be aware of that. Okay? So, is there anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Mott, M-A-R-T. And I'm the commander for the John and Perry American Movement Post. That's the landowner immediately abutting the Rockland Country Club.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to speak that I'm appreciative of the fact that the country club is investing to make improvements to their property, and just for the record, we have no objections. I, I actually feel safer with tanks above the ground than the risk of them in the ground tank leaking. So, I think it, in the long run, I think it's a good measure for the nearby letting them, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this project? One more time, anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public portion, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion to close it. Do I have a second? Mr. Young makes a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public session is closed. As you can see, the, the, two things, the board does have a lot of questions that are not answered. We do want to see the new set of plans, and hopefully, a lot of these questions that have been brought up tonight will be answered on a new set of plans. So, um, I, it's up to you, if you would ask for a continuation. I think the town, once you have everything straightened out and, and resubmitted, the town can get you, the building department might be able to get you in on the next meeting. I don't know what, what's available. So, ask for a continuation?
Yeah, it sounds like that's gonna really be the only option, so, yeah, that's fine. The next meeting is, what, what's the date?
Okay. The next meeting is June 9th. So, I can place you on that meeting, just have the plans in by mid next week.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so you're-
You can change the signs by hand, and note that the meeting is now June 9th.
Understood.
Okay, so you're asking for a continuation?
Yes.
No, you can't say yes. You have to say, yes, I'm asking for?
Yes, I'm asking for a continuation.
Thank you very much. Okay, good evening, thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is a point of confirmation. I'm sure probably the applicant misspoke, but there are other options other than asking for a continuation, and that would be upon the information we have now, and I think we have an idea how that would go. But a continuation is not the only legal option. I just want to state that for the record. Thank you very much.
Sir, I think it would be the easiest thing for her, because, uh... He has many options, but I, I think, you know, I kind of suggest the easiest and quickest way for her to get her application going is to ask for a continuation.
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify, I did see the revised plans.
Yes, ma'am.
And the main, the main change was to move the tanks further into the property. to, to eliminate the variances that would be required. So it definitely seems like a better plan, but considering it came yesterday, the board can't take action on a plan that they have not seen. So that's why it was my recommendation.
I understand that. And also by moving them, I don't know if there would be any additional concern with drainage in respect to the property. So that's why I think Booker has to look at it, and D E M E has to look at it, just to make sure that drainage is still correct. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next project is the Hun site plan, P B twenty one dash twenty nine.
Yes, this is Michael Esme. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening. Uh, I'm here tonight. The Hiyuns are here tonight. And Dennis Letson is also here tonight, who's a, a professional engineer who's worked on this project. And I'm going to go through some comments that are, are in response to the various letters that were sent to, for this application since the last meeting. And some of them you have, and some are in response to thing, you know, responses that have come recently. So, number one, the project was granted by your board preliminary site plan approval on six twenty four twenty. The Hiyuns are seeking final planning board approval. The project was granted by the zoning board of appeals variances to the zoning ordinance bulk requirements. Uh, and those variants granted included lot size of 3,175 square feet, front yard setback 1.7 feet, rear yard setback zero feet, floor area ratio 1.19, and building height 208 inches for each foot. The application for this project was made to the to ACABOR, the Architectural Review Board. Uh, and approval, as the project was presented, was granted by the board on May the sixth, two thousand and twenty. A note was added to the site plan regarding a pre-construction meeting with the D E M E and the building zoning and planning to be held prior to removal of vegetation or installation of erosion control devices. Note was added to the drawings regarding stormwater management phase two regulations. Note added to drawings regarding the regulation hours of construction operations. As requested by the D E M E, hay bales have been added to the erosion control silk fence design. As required, a structural drawing that was prepared by Dennis Letson has been included in this application, showing the design and detailing of the proposed concrete retaining walls. Percolation tests were done to determine groundwater elevation and percolation rates. And I think, if it's possible, Dennis, could you talk to this?
Yes, good evening. Um, the site was checked and infiltration tests were attempted at two locations on the site. However, a, either a perched groundwater table or an impermeable soil layer were impacted those tests. The pre-silk was performed and the following day, when the infiltration test was to have commenced, the holes were still flooded, so therefore the infiltration test failed. So we abandoned the idea of a subsurface stormwater management system and opted instead for the surface pond that is now shown on the drawings. In order to avoid having that pond compromised, it also incorporates an interceptor drain at the rear side or the westerly side of the pond to route groundwater away from the ponds to avoid having it seep through the, the stone wall and flood the pond.
Okay, uh, soil and erosion and sediment control details have been added to the plans. A post-construction maintenance agreement based on the Orange Town Stormwater Control Facility Maintenance Agreement will be submitted to the D E M E and the Orange Town Town Attorney's Office for review and approval. And we understand that that agreement will have to be in place prior to a planning board. The, 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 the acceptance of the, of the site plan, because we're, we're hoping for planning board approval tonight. Details of paving and grading have been included on the drawings. Notes have been added to the drawings regarding tree protection. First floor and basement elevations of the existing structure in addition have been added to the plans. And there was a concern from me, Mr. DeGeneres, Booker, about the existing basement floor in relationship to the adjoining grade. Those grades are not changing. And, and in point of fact, the only grades that will be changed on this property will be in the area of the new driveway where, where that's being reconfigured and where the stormwater detention basin is going to be installed. Otherwise, there will be no new grade changes on the site. A trench drain has been added to the drawings on the west side of the entry deck. This will take away any water coming from the new entry walkway going towards the deck and front door. The new concrete retaining wall forming the west side of the addition will have two foundation drains, one at the footing level and one at midpoint level between the footing and the top of the wall. As noted on the drawings, the new wooden decks will have a one eighth spent space minimum between deck boards, and as such, shall not be considered an impervious surface. Then I want to note that most of the decks are located in the village of, of Piermont. The stormwater surface detention basin under drain plus the interceptor drain will run to an existing adjacent swell and will have no negative impact on that swell. Let's see. Based on comments from Mr. Peters from D E M E, wing walls were added to the stone retaining wall that forms the back of the, the detention basin. And those wind walls were added to prevent any leakage, leakage that could have come around from behind the wall and would then compromise the, the stormwater basin. Notes have been added to the site plan stating that the owner is responsible for the maintenance of structures in the Tweed Boulevard right of way and that the owner will obtain a roadwork permit from the Rockin County Highway Department prior to starting construction work. There will be no net increase in peak rate of discharge from the site or new, which in, in this point is the new driveway. The important thing to note is that the impervious area of the new driveway and walkway to the house is significantly smaller than the existing paved area that now exists in the right of way adjacent to the house. Note added to the site plan stating that the owner will make an application to the Rockin County Health Department for stormwater facility mosquito breeding suppression at least 30 days prior to the installation of the stormwater facility. Access to the property for construction will be over a large existing asphalt paved area between the existing house and into the Tweed Boulevard right of way. And as such constitutes an acceptable construction entrance or construction work entrance from Tweed. This paving will be removed near the end of construction, the construction process, when the new driveway and walkway are constructed.
Mr. Esme?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Are, are there any of the consultants' comments that you feel you cannot comply with?
Oh, no. I, I only have, only have two more things and I'm done.
Okay, because it's not typical that we sit and read through every, every comment. So I just wanted to help you along there. I, I, I know it's a lot of information, so as long as you feel that you can meet all of the comments, and then, then the board, you know, would like to hear that. They don't need to hear the details of each one.
Okay.
If that helps you. Okay.
All right, there was just one more. Note was added to the drawings that all roof leaders from the addition will be directed to the stormwater detention basin. Drawings shall clearly show and identify trench drain outlet and addition footing drains. And then I was going to make a comment about your last letter, Jane, about the fact that we know that all these things have to be done prior to obtaining a building permit. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let me go through the consultant's reports. Project review recommends that a perk test must be repeated and witnessed by a town of Orange Town engineer from the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering. James Slaven, Department of Building Zoning and Planning, May eighteenth, she has one comment. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, dated May tenth. They have nine comments. Booker Engineering, May twenty fifth. The proposed action has provided drainage information that demonstrates that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Hun site plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are two. Bureau of Fire Prevention, they have one, they, it was the letters dated May fourteenth, they have one comment. Excuse me. Some papers. Okay, sorry. Rockin County Department of Planning, April sixteenth. They have, it's actually nine, it's eight, and then an eight point one. Then we have, that was dated April sixteenth. We also have an April thirtieth letter from the Rockin County Department of Planning, of which it says the comments made on our April sixteenth letter remain valid. Uh, I also have a letter from Rockin County Highway Department dated April twenty six, of which they have a total of six comments. No, three comments. And that is it. Cheryl, anything else?
Uh, did you read the Booker letter that we got today?
Oh, yes, I did. I'm pretty sure I did. Let me see, let me see. Eight twenty fifth letter?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, they have, they just have two comments. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was concerned whether or not Mr. Peters was aware of that failed perk test. It seems like he has been notified. That property is in rough shape. I, I wish you good luck with it. It needs some seriously, serious work done to it, but the plans look good, though. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mandel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think they answered all the requests that we've, we've made over the previous times that appeared. I too wish them luck. I have no questions on it. They'll say the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, that was an exhaustive explanation of the comments, so I have nothing else to add.
Okay, sir. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has to be one of the more difficult projects I've seen technically in quite some time, particularly in steep slope. And I think Mr. Esme has done a commendable job from what I can see on this project. I hope obstacles are overcome with perk tests, et cetera. I would reserve the right to respond if any new information comes in from community at the end of this, but otherwise, I think it's a very nice project. And I had my doubts in the beginning as to how this would come out, but it looks like a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews?
Looks like it's going to be a pretty good project. I want to thank you for all your detailed comments on the, on the letters. That was very good. But I'm good with it right now.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, we've seen this plan a few times. It's a unique property crossing over a couple of municipalities. Uh, my only concern is with the, the perk test, and we run into issues in the past with giving final before the perk test. I think Bruce Peters sent us a scolding letter one time saying if it fails, it changed the plan. So I just wonder if that would be an issue with getting final, with still an outstanding protest. Uh, that is my only comment tonight for this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Usually, Mr. Peters says that his notation is that not to give final until the test is done, but it is not in his comments on this time. So I believe that they're going to have to get a perk test done. So I believe that until that gets done, they're not going to get the plan signed off. So that's kind of a check and balance for us. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, no, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public wish to have any questions or comments on this application? One more time, does anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this application? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion to close it. Mr. Young makes a motion to close it. Uh, do I have a second? Mr. Mandel, second. Thank you, sir. All in favor? Aye. No opposition? Fine, thank you very much. Uh, motion for lead agent? Mandel makes a motion for lead agent. Do I have a second? Mr. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, I don't see any opposition. Thank you. Uh, motion for neg deck? Mandel makes a motion for a neg deck. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, I see no opposition. Okay, may I have a motion for a final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions, Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Andrews makes a motion for a final condition, and the conditions are. Project review committee has one comment. James Slaven, May sixteenth, has one. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, May tenth. They have nine. Booker Engineering, May twenty fifth, they have two. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, May fourteenth, they have one. Rockin County Department of Planning, May sixteenth. They have eight or nine, however you want to look at it. I also have a letter from Rockin County Planning dated April thirtieth. They have one comment. I have a letter from Highway dated April twenty six. They have three comments. That's all I have. Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Mandel.
Mandel makes a motion for a second. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see no opposition. Sir, you got your final. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, next. We have Flex Site Plan, P B twenty one dash thirty.
Mr. Levac present for the Flex Site Plan?
Yes, sir. Could you tell us all about your project?
This project started without a building permit. The
The, um, homeowner constructed a gravel parking area on the down slope of his driveway. Including a boulder style retaining wall and has added plantings. Uh, he subsequently received a violation notice and then, uh, has contracted with Mr. Gdansky to put together a site plan to disapprove through the planning board because it's in the CEA. And, um, at the same time, do stormwater control mitigation? So the plan before you is the one that was reviewed at the PRC. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let me go through the comments. PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for this project. Uh, Office of Buildings, Own and Planning, Jane Slaven, May 16th. She has two. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, May 26th. They have five. Booker Engineering, May 24th. Um, the proposed action has a significant analysis to demonstrate potential significant increase in stormwater runoff can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Fleck driveway site plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments of which there are six. Uh, Town of Orange Town Bureau of Fire Prevention, May 14th. They have one. Rockland County Department of Planning, April 16th. They just say that since the proposed project will have no adverse subject impacts to the county wide interest, this matter remains local termination. Uh, Rockland County Sewer District Number One dated April 26th. They have two comments. I have a letter from Orange Town ZBA dated four seven consenting Town of Orange Town Planning Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning Department dated four 13th consenting Town of Orange Town Planning Lead Agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway Department dated four 12th consenting Orange Town Planning Board Lead Agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway dated four 12th. No comments at this time. And that is all. Cheryl, anything else?
I believe that's, uh, did you read, uh, Bruce Peters' letter that I sent today?
Uh, wait a minute, just a second. It's, uh, dated May 26th?
Yes.
And it has five items on it?
I sent it to you this afternoon.
Okay, but that's the one that was made 26th. That's the one I have.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay, can I open it up to the board? Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did have a question also regarding Bruce Peters' letter. If the applicant had any issues, have, have you seen that letter?
I have. I am in possession of that letter and know there's no issues.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mandel. Mr. Mandel, your mic is on.
Okay, I couldn't hear you. All right. Uh, no comments at this time. The previous speaker asked what I was also wondering about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
I have nothing new to add at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Dell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But can the applicant, uh, please make it clear as to what, uh, construction you're proposing to do at this time, or is there any?
What's left to do, sir, is to install the dry wells as well as pave the gravel area that's in place now. And that'll be done after we obviously get a permit.
All right, I just wanted to make sure because it's a little unclear because we already have done some of the work. All right, it's close to the road, so I don't see, a lot of problems have been eliminated because of that, but, um, if you are to be putting in that woven wire fence, it would be hoped that on the down slope by, uh, the road, that you might try to put in some stake hay bales in there if there's room. Is there to do that?
If that becomes a condition to the application.
Uh, well, what I, that's why I was asking about the construction. And all you're going to do is just go over the top of it? Are you going to be doing major excavation there?
There will be excavation done in the driveway to place the dry well. And then we'll be paving the gravelled area and pitching it to the dry well.
Now, I understand, but when you're paving the gravel area, there's not going to be much excavation then done in that area. Is that true?
There should be done.
All right, well, that's what I wanted to clarification on. Okay, I have no other comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews. No comments at this time. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCory.
Uh, just, just a comment that, uh, as long as the applicant can meet the Bruce Peters', uh, comments on especially number three, it looks like you want to relocate the dry well. So the, the plans, uh, will have to change a bit. Is that, is that true?
That's something that Mr. Gdansky will have to address.
All right, yeah, just so, uh, just so you're aware that, that they will change the plans for us. All right, that is my own comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Bond.
Uh, no, I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this co- application? Okay, one more time. Um, I'm open to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public.
Mr. Mandel makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Andrews, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposition. Okay, um. Ms. Slaven, is there any reason why we can't go forward with this and give him a final on this? Because there's really not a heck of a lot on this. Is there? I don't know. What do you think?
I, I don't see any major objection to if the board saw fit to go to final.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, does, well, I'll find out right away. Um, could I have a motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agent, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion for lead agent. Do I have a second? Mr. Young?
Mr. Mandel's second.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay, thank you. Uh, motion for neg deck?
Motion for neg deck, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel makes a motion for neg deck. Do I have a second for neg deck?
Mr. Andrews seconds.
Mr. Andrews second for neg deck. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion for final with conditions?
Mr. Andrews motions for final with conditions.
Okay, and the conditions are, project review has one. Jane Slaven, May 16th has two. Uh, Department of Environmental Management and, and Engineering, May 16th. Bruce Peters has five. Booker Engineering, May 24th has six. Uh, Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, May 14th has one. Department of Planning, April 16th has one. And Rockland County Sewer District Number One, April 29th has two. And that's it. Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Mandel's seconds.
Mr. Mandel's seconds. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any? No opposition. Sir, you got your final. Good luck with the project.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Okay, next one is the Murrow Residence. It's, uh, PB 21 dash 31.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Andy Delvecchio. I'm representing, uh, Dr. Marrow connection with this application.
Okay, sir, you have open comments?
Uh, yes, if I may. This application concerns property located at 1079 Route Nine South. Located in your R 22 zone. The reason we're before you is the property is located in the critical environmental area. Requiring permission from the planning board to make any improvements to the property. And that is in fact what, uh, Dr. Marrow seeks to do, which is to build a one car garage adjacent to the existing home. A small addition off the rear of the home where there currently exists a deck. And to provide a, um, front porch and entrance way into the, uh, home. Uh, it does trigger a side yard variance for both single and combined side yard. And, um, there was a comment that I will acknowledge in Peter's review letter regarding soil testing and perk test. Which we have submitted certified results from our engineer, uh, in between the TRC meeting and our appearance here today.
Okay, thank you. Let me go through the consultant's reports.
Yes.
PRC has no additional comments. Um, Jane, Office of Buildings, Own and Planning, Jane Slaven, May 18th. She has three comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, May 10th. Bruce Peters has 12 comments. Uh, Booker Engineering, May 4th. The proposed action has not provided significant Let me, the, the proposed action has not provided significant analysis to demonstrate potential significant increase in the stormwater runoff can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Murrow Site Plan not be approved for drainage at this time. Uh, that was the May 4th letter. I have a May 13th letter. And it says, the proposed action has provided significant analysis to demonstrate potential significant increase in stormwater runoff can be mitigated. We therefore recommended that the Murrow Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project, above project comments of which there are five. Uh, Town of Orange Town Fire Prevention, they have one. Uh, it's dated May 14th. And I have a letter from the Anzoli Bureau of Engineering dated May 16th. Um, that they did a perk test on May 13th. One site, one, one hole. Okay, um, Rockland County Department of Planning, April 30th. Again, they have eight point one comments. Um, Rockland County Sewer District Number One, April 30th has two. Rockland County Health, May 24th. They have two. I have a letter from Orange Town ZBA dated five, five, 21 consenting Orange Town Planning Board and Service Lead Agent. I have another letter from Orange Town ZBA on five, five. No comment at this time. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway dated five, five consenting Orange Town Planning Board to be lead agent. I have another letter from Rockland County Highway dated five, five. No comment at this time. Rockland County Health, five, 24 consents Orange Town Planning be, be lead agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Health dated five, 24. Comments attached. Um, a letter from Rockland County Planning dated four, 21 consenting to Orange Town being lead agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Division Environmental Services dated five, three. This project is out of our jurisdiction. And that is all. Cheryl, was there anything else that I missed?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board. Mr. Young.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I saw the, uh, perk test from Azlino and Fury. Uh, I just, I think the applicant indicated that the, uh, letter was submitted to Bruce Peters and was he satisfied with the results?
I'm not sure that Mr. Peters was going to be in a position to issue a response between the two dates that we submitted. He indicated as such at the TRC meeting. So, uh, he indicated he was okay with it subject to receiving it and taking a look at it.
Okay, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mandel.
Yes. Good question. Uh, Cheryl, on the plans that we got, do we get an enlarged plan of the, uh, actual what they were going to be doing on the site? Because all I have is a, uh, is a site plan. Uh, it shows the existing by level and the, what they were going to do with it and floor plans. Is there another set of plans?
Uh, you received whatever the applicant gave me.
Okay, well, now looking at the plan.
Of architectural plans submitted by Mr. Bruno.
And the site plan is only one sheet?
Correct. The architectural plans are.
Yeah, I, I saw those 13. It's 13 and 16 pages.
Right.
Okay, in regards to the site plan, uh, in my opinion, it's my opinion, the, uh, plan should be enlarged over there and defined. You have right, uh, drawings over, uh, written, uh, uh, statements, like roof over whatever it is there. Um, the items on the plan should be clearly marked. I think it should be enlarged. There's numerous things being done there and I don't think it's clear, uh, as to what it is. It looks like stairs down the side. Um, but I, I think it should be clarified in a much larger drawing showing it what the conditions are and what the change is because there's no narrative that tells me exactly all the things that are going to be done there. Um, secondly, there's, uh, there should be a landscape plan, but on this plan here, it should be an indication of what trees are going to remain, what trees are going to be removed from that location. And the retaining wall shows its five foot, uh, point five maximum height. What is the length of that, uh, wall? Does that height vary on that wall?
If you'd like, I can have our engineer provide that information. Um, I did neglect and you did remind me in one of your comments that there is a single tree that is proposed to come down. It is unfortunately not shown, but it is located directly where the proposed garage is. We have obtained a letter from an arborist indicating that that tree is not one that should be kept because it's vine encased and leaning at this time. And we will submit that letter.
And the sill fence, is that the little green line that runs around the property? It's going to work on.
Dominic on that, if I may. Mr. Dominic?
Yes, Craig Dominic here. Yes, that is the, uh, green line bounding the, uh, work to be done.
Yeah. No, I, I, I think that, uh, this plan should be, uh, more defined. Everything should be clarified on here. It should be larger so we can see exactly what it is. What tree is going to be removed? And there should have been a narrative explaining each and every item there which would have made it simpler. Uh, that's all any comments I have now. I'll wait for, uh, to ask any additional, uh, statements in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, thank you. I agree, Mr. Mandel. There are some issues with the, the plans that need to be clarified and revised. And I, I would like to hear what Bruce Peters has to say about the perk test before, um, we decide to go much further with this, um, project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dell.
Thank you, sir. Um, a number of concerns on this. Uh, first of all, in the orderly section, you have a few changes in contour there and I don't see any reason for doing it other than for, uh, maybe trying to create additional lawn, et cetera. Just, I don't see any reason to have any of those contours in there. You could accomplish it with a small retaining wall if needed, but basically almost following the existing contours. So what's the point of doing all that?
Uh, well, if I may answer to that, um, the actual, I don't know if you had stopped out at this site. The actual condition is a mishmash. Uh, you have a couple brick steps at the top and there's a break. Um, you've got a series of, uh, six by six inch railroad ties certainly. Now, some at this point knocked out a plate, another gap, and another tight series of steps. Um, so it is, uh, you know, really, you know, out of function and again. And again, the contours that come in there as existing were as located from our surveyors. Upon, you know, a lot, upon laying out a more reasonable, you know, and modern concrete safe with landings, the grading changes slightly. Nothing, you know, it doesn't change by a foot in any area. But yeah, there are small changes less than a foot, and that's just the way of showing them tying in.
Yeah, but I think there's other ways of doing it. Maybe you could establish a contract limit line, because I think it definitely has to come back. I understand that there's, I took a brief look at it, but a lot of this which is going on here is just a little, it's not clear. So if you have, for record, you have existing retaining walls and you're removing, then you should put that in. I understand you might want to landscape it, but it's just the extent of the change. My major concerns, however, are in the upper portion of the driveway, where you're showing great changes within, looks like about a foot or two of the property line. And that's usually been something we've had quite a bit of difficulty with. I realize that there is a, it's like a small driveway there. But even so, I, I don't really see why that's necessary. Can you explain that to me?
I'm not exactly sure I understand. Maybe you can point me to the number on the contour that you have an issue with in that.
Look at number 92, Contour 92, right beneath southwest corner of your proposed driveway.
Yes. That's basically where you could...
Why are you so close to the property line? You have to.
Well, it's, I gotta tell you, it's to enable, it's to keep the drainage. I mean, there's a swale there to keep the drainage within the property and leading it to the grate at the top of the septic pit, just below the...
See that as having any sort of a swale effect at all. But maybe, you know, you're seeing something that I am. It just is rather arbitrary. The other thing is that you're having a 20-foot setback, and you're getting rid of quite a bit of it to have this proposed one-car garage there. I would like to hear what the people in the area might have to say about it. The other thing is the least you should do is where you have some of these areas with the silt fence on the down slope side. The areas where you're having your grading, you should also reinforce it with state hay bales. I'm not talking about the entire distance, just the area where you're mostly having the construction and the contour changes. Other than that, you know, I just feel that this plan needs a little bit more work and a little bit more clarifications before I'd be comfortable moving it along. That's all, sir. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Andrews.
All my comments were already made by the other board members. I'm interested to see if there's any public comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. The architectural plans look good. I agree with Mr. Mandell about the site plans. It's tough to figure out what's there, what's, what's existing, what's being added to it, and to really get a feel of the changes that are being made to this, this plan. So I'd like to see a better site plan as well. And I concur with the other members and with their comments, too. So that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bond. No additional questions. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? Okay, one more time. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? Okay, hearing done, I ask for a motion to close the public session. Mr. Mandell makes a motion to close the public session. Mr. McCory makes the second. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? No opposition, fine. Okay. Sir, I, you can see that the board has a lot of concerns. And I think maybe the best step, because you have, you have a couple variances to go for, is maybe if we move with a preliminary on this, which will allow you to go to the other boards, and to get your variances and then come back with us. As you can see, there's a lot of concerns. The plans are not as clear as the board would like them. There's a lot of questions about it, and I think maybe what's going back, getting your variances, if you do get them and then coming back and clean your plans up, I think that will, will work a lot for you. So with that said, can I have a motion for preliminary with conditions?
Mr. Chairman, before you pursue with the motion, could I ask whether or not the board would consider a waiver of an appearance before Akaboor?
That's up to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. I'm looking at most of the board members. Okay, Mr. Dell.
Yes, I think that rather than moving it forward at this time, I'd rather see a continuation to get some more information, because I won't be comfortable with all of it moving forward with the amount of information contained here. I don't know how the other board members feel, but there may be some that agree with me, and I don't want to put the applicant in a difficult situation. So can I, if we take a straw poll of the board to see who feels...
Okay, if I may make, just on that, is if we continue with them, they have to go to ZBA to get variances. We asked them for continuation. I don't know if they're going to be allowed to go to ZBA.
They may not, but at least then we've done our due diligence, which I question right now if we would have based upon the information. But the other board members may feel differently. That's why I would best suspect you might consider a straw poll.
Okay, what I'm saying to you is if we were to continue it, they were making corrections that, that you wish, and they come back, and we approve of those, what you suggested, then they go to ZBA, and ZBA does not grant the variances, then we're back to square one. So we've lost a lot of time.
Mr. Chairman, I would also add, based on my conversation with the boards, the zoning board secretary, if we don't, if we are not able to move on after tonight's hearing to the ZBA, we likely will be continued into September as our first opportunity to get to the zoning board because of their schedule. And this homeowner is trying to move into this home, and I understand certain procedures and processes are in order, and we're happy to follow them. But I really would like to resort back to, at a minimum, your initial suggestion.
Okay, let me poll the board on this. Mr. Young, do you feel that we should allow them to go, to give them a preliminary and allow them to go to ZBA and then come back? Or to continue them to correct some of the, the issues that the board members have, and then come back?
They're going to come back anyway, but I, I don't want to prohibit them from going to ZBA first. So I would approve of a preliminary only at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandell.
I'm against giving a preliminary this time based upon my earlier comments. I want to see a full plan. I don't think you can go to ZBA with the plan the way it is now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
I'm okay with us voting on preliminary, but I don't agree with the applicant's request to waive Akaboor.
Okay, well, let's do one, one thing at a time. Okay, so...
While I have the floor, I'm just giving you my opinion.
Okay. And Mr. Dell, you want them to, continuation to come back with the revised plans?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Andrews.
I'd go with the preliminary, but I will, I would not want to waiver the Akaboor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. McCory.
I, I agree that the plans we have are inadequate to make a decision tonight for me. You know, we keep asking for more information, and I'd like to see that before moving this on as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bond, we have, I want to hear your input, but you don't have a vote on this, but I do want to hear your input.
That's why they pay you the big bucks, Tom, you know?
That's right.
I'm, I'm not, I'm in favor of going to the Akaboor, and I don't have a problem with giving a preliminary and letting them come back.
Okay.
If I was voting, but I'm not, so.
It's 1, 2, 3, 4, 4, 2, 3, 4 in favor of moving on with preliminary, and there's 3 in favor of...
No, it's not, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Mandell. Mr. Mandell, what's your...
Is that your, the fourth vote, is that your vote?
Yes, it is, sir.
I said the fourth vote for going forward, is that your vote? Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes. Because they have to come back with us. They, they, I think we've given them a lot of information, a lot of questions have been asked, and that I believe if they don't come back answering all our questions and coming back with a modified site plan, they know they're not going to go any further. So I'd still like to have them, have them, have the opportunity to go to ZBA to get the variances. Because like I said, if they don't get the variances, it's a moot point, the whole thing. So that's why I, I voted that way. So again, I'm asking for a motion for a preliminary with conditions.
I'll make the motion for a preliminary with conditions.
Okay, who is that, please?
That was Andrews and Sweeney will...
Okay, Mr. Andrews makes the motion for preliminary with conditions. And the conditions are, PRC has one. Jane Slavin, May 18th, has three. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, May 10th, has 12. Booker Engineering, May 13th, has five. Bureau of Fire Prevention Town of Orange Town, May 14th, has one. Rockland County Planning, April 30th, has 8.1 or 9. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, April 30th, has two. Rockland County Health, May 24th, has two, and that's all. Sir, you can see that the board is very, very concerned. This is a critical environmental area. Every member here is concerned that everything is done correctly. And, and I think you feel the sensitive board. Mr. Dell has a lot of questions, which I think you should incorporate in your plans.
Chairman, you read the, you read the comments. We didn't vote yet.
Okay, I understand that, but I just wanted to, just to talk to this gentleman a little bit. Okay.
We had a vote.
Point of interest that we vote for lead agency.
Okay, of, of vote, all in favor of more...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We did not vote for lead agency.
That's right.
As Mr. Dell just said.
Yes.
Yes, why?
We have not, I don't think we voted for lead agency or NEDD.
Well, we're not voting yet. Do we do CEQA now?
Don't we usually do before we do the...
Okay, okay, okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, motion. Motion for lead agent. Mr. Young, do I have a second for lead agent?
Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion for second, okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Any, any opposition on us being... Okay, done. Okay, motion for a NEDD. Young, Mr. Make, Young makes the motion for a NEDD. Do I have a second?
Mr. Andrews seconds.
Mr. Andrews second. Do I have, okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Dell, anyone else oppose?
Okay, Mr. Mandell's opposed.
Mr. Mandell opposes. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, then a motion for preliminary with conditions. We'll do that again. I was out of order, I'm sorry. Mr. Young, do you make the motion for preliminary with conditions? Mr. Young. Okay. And the conditions, I'll read them again, I'm sorry. Project review has one. Jane Slavin, May 18th, has three. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, May 10th, has 12. Booker Engineering, May 6, May 13th, has five. Orange Town Bureau of Fire Prevention, dated May 14th, has one. Rockland County Planning, April 30th, has 8.1. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, April 30th, has two. Okay, Rockland County Health has dated, May 24th, has two. I'm sorry, I must hit it with the papers. Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Andrews seconds.
Mr. Andrews seconds. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go down to board and see who votes aye and who votes nay. Mr. Young.
I made the motion, aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mandell.
Mr. Mandell, nay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Dell.
Nay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory.
Mr. McCory, nay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so it's 4, 3, 4. Like I was saying before, sir, you see that there's a lot of concerns with this. You have a lot of work before you come back to us. All the board members are very, very concerned over this. And I hope you just keep that in the back of your mind and, and, you know, do the right thing. Mr. Dell.
Yes, sir. I believe you have to say aye or nay on this. I, I didn't hear you. Maybe you did.
Okay, I say aye.
Thank you, sir.
And yes, we did hear your concerns. We share your concerns, and I assure you that we will revise the plans to address each and every one of them.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Comit, right. Where is it? Where is it? Where is it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I request a brief recess.
Yes, sir.
We've been out for an hour and a half now. Thank you.
Is everybody back? Okay. I believe we got everybody. Okay, good. Okay, um. Jay, you're doing this?
Yes, with uh Mr. Noble.
Okay, I'm lost. Who's doing this? Uh. Oh, okay.
Rob Noble.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, Jay Greenwell and Bob Noble are on, and I'm going to share the screen when Jay wants me to.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's gonna do the presentation?
Oh, let me start, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Very low, Jay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's better.
This is the application of Mark Camito to, to build a house at uh 455 South Broadway, uh, which is a lot of 13,800 square feet in the RG zone. Uh, it really is off of a private road just after the underpass on River Road uh on the uphill side. The lot has adequate area to meet the code even after the deductions for the easement that the town has for a uh five-foot diameter drainage pipe that runs through the property. But the, uh, the only frontage that the property has is a narrow strip of land at the end of Byte Lane, affording access to other lots which are in the Village of Grandview. So the property has access through, uh, from River Road uh up a private road onto uh Village of Grandview property and then into the town of Orange Town. The lot has some issues with respect to the grades of the road, and we cannot provide uh access without a variance for driveway slope. And Jane, if you could put that uh profile up that you had just for a minute, that would be helpful. We had been asked at Project Review to provide a uh driveway profile. You can slide it up so they can see the um grade profile. There you go. The dash line in the beginning and running up to about the middle of the drawing is the existing Byte Road uh grade. And that you see is at uh 11.8% for the first 50 feet. Then it's 15%, then 13.2%, and then 10%. And then there's a section that we're proposing of about 15%. That would be the extension within the Village of Grandview till we get to the property line, which is the beginning of the Town of Orange Town town line. And that would be the access to the property. Now, our original submission that the board never reviewed uh was withdrawn because of some comments from DEME. And we modified the layout to pull the house towards the south and modify the driveway grades. Originally, we were providing a 12% grade in the Town of Orange Town, but we modified that so that the grade in the Town of Orange Town is no greater than uh the 10% of average. We will still need a variance for uh the driveway slopes from the Village of Grandview. We will also need a variance for the frontage on a private road. And um we had some issues with respect to the amount of utilities that the town has within that narrow strip that's providing access. But we're going to do the best we can to address all the comments that had uh come up with the environmental. Some of the questions related back to an earlier uh plan, and I think we're carried over into this. Uh, but we would be happy to address those uh questions and comments as we move along. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let me go through the consultant reports. Project Review has, has one comment. Office of Buildings Owning and Planning, Jane Slaven, March 29th. She has five comments. Uh, Office of Buildings Owning and Planning, excuse me. Is that redundant? No. Uh, May 18th. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me. The first one was March 29th, of which it was five comments. And then the new one is from Jane Slaven is May 18th, of which there are four comments. I have a letter from Department of Environmental Management and Engineering dated March 26th, of which there are 25 comments. I also have a letter dating May 10th, 2020, from Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, of which they have 16 comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Both, um, at, at Project Review, we discussed one of the reasons that the Project Review had recommended we prepare the road profile was to demonstrate the misunderstanding that uh there really isn't any section of the road that's 25%. Um, and Jane had just repeated one of uh DEME's comments. So we had removed the most of the grading, if not all the grading over top of the 60-inch pipe, with the exception of a very small section of the driveway that comes into the site. And the um, as I show on this profile, there is no portion of the road that's, that's that steep. And the, the steepness of the driveway at 15 or 16%, um, know that this is 15 feet in 100 feet. It's, it's really not that uncommon. Uh, it's very ordinary for driveways on 9W and uh River Road within the Village of Grandview and in the upper Grandview area along 9W to have very steep driveways. So this is very much uh common for this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I also have a transmittal from, from Jay Greenwell dated 4/29. And I think he went through, he has 15 comments, and I think he's just a referral to both Jane Slaven and Bruce Peters' comments. Okay, I have a letter from Booker Engineering, May 24th. It says, "The proposed action has provided significant analysis to demonstrate potential significant increase. The storm runoff can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Comey Light Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are seven." Okay, uh Bureau of Fire Prevention Town of Orange Town, March 26th, has one. Department of Planning, uh, Rockland County, March 18th. They have five. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, March 25th, has two. Okay, I have a letter from Orange and Rockland. Okay, which was dated March 15th. Okay, I have a letter from the Village of Grandview on the Hudson dated March 18th. And they have three comments. I have a letter from New York State Department of Transportation, March 15th. Uh, I would like to inform you that this project does not have any direct impact on the state highway system. Okay, I also have a letter dated 3/27 from Orange Town ZBA consenting Town of Orange Town Planning Board be lead agent. I have a letter from Village of Grandview on the Hudson dated 3/18, consenting Town of Orange Town Planning Board be lead agent. I have a letter from Village of Grandview on the Hudson dated 3/18. Comments attached. Letter from Rockland County Highway Department dated 3/12. Uh, consent, Orange Town being lead agent. Um, Rockland County Highway Department, 3/12, uh, no comments at this time. Rockland County Planning, dated 3/12, consent, Orange Town Planning, lead this, lead agent. And I have short EAF. Hey Cheryl, anything else that I missed?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me open it up to the board. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, Jay, there was some confusion as to the location of this property as I was on South Broadway, and I didn't see any signs or anything, and found my way to Byte Avenue. Um, so has Grandview acknowledged that this property will go on to uh Byte Avenue?
They had reviewed it, and they had questioned, in fact, how the applicant uh had the right to get from the end of Byte Avenue to the property line, but we had provided them uh with a copy of the deed that uh reserved to this property, the right to get from the end of the paved portion of Byte Lane to the property line. We haven't heard anything more from them, and they haven't responded to anything uh subsequent uh as far as I know.
So, so it hasn't, it will not have a South Broadway address?
We believe that 911 will assign a Byte Lane address, as with the other homes that are up there. Sorry, my, my name's Rob Noble, I'm the attorney representing the applicant. And um part of your package is a copy of the deed that contains the easement, which provides access to River Road. Uh, and we also provided a copy of that to the Village of Grandview. And we'll provide them with whatever additional information they need.
Okay, and the variance on the uh 25-degree pitch on the driveway, that'll come from us and, or the Town of Orange Town ZBA and not uh Grandview?
No, the, the, that's an inaccurate number. The accurate number is 15% as was demonstrated with this profile. And that has to come from Grandview because we modified the pitch of the driveway within the town to meet the code at 10%.
Jay, can you verify that this small section that is indicated as in the Town of Orange Town, is that at 15% or is that at 10%?
That's an average of 15%. That will be no greater than 10% from the town line forward. We were just picking uh average sections of 50 foot. So the, the, at, the pitch you can see on the left side of that line is a little bit less than there is on the right side. So we were just picking 50-foot segments in order to demonstrate to the board what the average slope is over each section. So yes, we will comply with the 10% max uh within the Town of Orange Town.
Okay, and you will explain that at the time to the ZBA as you have to go to them for the um, the 288 anyway, right?
Correct. And if there is any, if there is any portion that is in the town, we'll add that when we uh end up going to the ZBA and, and ask for that variance if needed. But I don't believe we need to.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank, thank you very much. Mr. Mandel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you were show, on the screen uh above, you were showing a diagram of the uh site plan. Is that the same one we have, or is that a different one?
That is a pared-down version of the site plan just to show the plan view of the driveway. That is not a site plan uh intended to replace the plan that you have reviewed in front of you.
Okay.
This is just a supplemental exhibit.
Yeah, Mr. Mandel, yeah, at, at PRC, the, the, at PRC, the confusion over the driveway slopes came up. So I asked Mr. Greenwell to provide this for clarification during this meeting.
Okay, no, appreciate that. I'd like the slope. That's the question I was gonna ask for a, a profile of the slope because it's a, it is quite steep over there, having gone up uh that location. Uh, regarding Mr. Peters' uh comments, number eight, he, you talk, uh, he, you have the trench drain in there which he finds totally unacceptable. Uh, what, what are your plans to try to change that?
He did not object to the trench drain per se. What he was objecting to is the fact that our original intent was to allow any overflow of the drainage that's going into the dry wells. If they were to fill up, we were going to allow the trench drain to act as an overflow like a level spreader. He doesn't like that, and what he wants us to do is provide an overflow from the dry wells into the drainage system, which we will agree to.
Okay. And you still haven't heard back from uh Upper Grandview regarding that. Jane, do we have a copy of the uh, the uh access right that he was talking about that he supplied to us?
We do have a copy of the deed. I'm not familiar, like, I didn't read through the deed, so, but we do have a copy of the deed.
Okay. Yeah, like, uh, clarify, this, you know, from the future when they come back, clarification exactly that's permissible to that, otherwise makes it. One last thing, have you contacted ONR yet about the uh gas lines?
No, we have not. No, we have not.
Okay, all right. Okay, nothing further at this time. We serve the right to ask questions future based upon public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
Yes, thank you. It's obviously a challenging project on a very complicated piece of property. It seems like there's a lot of different agencies and towns that are going to have to chime in and feel satisfied before it comes back to us. So, I'll be curious to see what the public has to say and then if this moves forward, what all the different consultants and experts say before it comes back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dell.
I agree with much of what Mr. Sweeney has said. Mr. Greenwell, if you look on the southerly side of the property, maybe you just put it in there for me, but it looks like you're showing grading taking place right to the property line.
It's actually a few feet off.
Next to the stone wall.
Yes, you're correct.
And you can eliminate that, obviously. And I think you should also put a line in there showing that the distance you are from the property line, which we've always had is a minimum of five feet.
Not a problem.
Also, to the west of there, you also looks like you have another encroachment. I wonder if that's really needed. And that has to do, I think you could see it at the end of your swell. I think that could be brought in a little bit without much problem. Am I correct in that, too?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. The other things are a little, it's a difficult site. Looks like you've done a very nice job with the limitation. But who owns the property to the east? Is that owned by the applicant?
No, it used to be owned by the same person that owned this property. It was the Perry, William Perry. And then it was sold to another intermediary party and then it was sold to the current owner, Garrity.
Okay, because my question is, you're showing that driveway almost right on the property line within about a foot or two. And I wonder how that could be mitigated. I think it could be moved at least two or three feet to the west, then at least you'd have some sort of barrier.
You are correct. And that was one of the comments that Kendy Gennaro brought up in Booker's review letter. He wants it moved a little further west as well. We have no objection.
All right, and the state hay bales are nice, but then again, you'd have to obviously have room to put them in there. Again, a very difficult site. Looks like you put a lot of work into it, but there are these details which are critical. Since you're saying you could take care of all of them, that aligns with most of my major concerns. What's happening on the extreme northeast corner with the grading, that's a little unclear. Can you explain that to me?
What was the question?
Excuse me. Pardon me for having the point in front of my face. The extreme northeast corner, the changes in grading, can you tell me what's happening there?
Well, we had to change some of the grading. We're holding the grades in the Village of Grandview. We're meeting the existing grade at the property line to make sure we don't go on into any of the neighboring properties. And from the 48.2 elevation at the property line, we're coming up at a 10% pitch. So, we have to move the dry wells uphill a little bit, but we're holding the grade as much as we can over the 60-inch pipe so that we don't alter the grade, and that's to satisfy the EME's comments.
Okay, well, I'm referring to what looks like a little contour change between 48 and 50, actually between your trench drain and contour 50. Can you see what I'm talking about? Looks like one little line. I'm just trying to find out what's going on there, if that's a drafting error, if that's what you need or what you're proposing to do.
That's the 50 contour going to hit the curb line and then the 50 contour comes on the pavement across, is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about on the extreme northerly side when you're off the driveway. You see that? It looks almost like the capital Y, that short piece you have there. Yes, right.
That's the proposed 50 contour.
Okay. How close is that to the property line? Is it going to be five feet off, I think?
Probably not, only because we have no choice in where we enter with the driveway. And in order to keep a 10% grade, we can't, we have to, we have to go with the 10% grade and go where that takes us. And in order to put in a curb to channel the water into the trench drain, that's where the contour has to be. I mean, we could put in a little wall over there, but we had a wall. And Bruce Peters said he didn't want the wall on top of the 24-inch pipe, even though it was only going to be about 18-inch high, so we took it out. But you're right, it is a very complex site.
Exactly. All right, well, it sounds reasonable to me, but I would like to hear the neighbor from the north and the neighbor to the east here, and of course, the neighbor to the south and whatever other side. Do you have any comments to speak with them? But again, overall, looking at it, looks like you did a good job with a difficult site, but these changes that I've recommended, I think I make it a little less obvious, but I've got to hear what else has to say. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews.
Yeah, looking at the site, how difficult it is, I have to commend you, Jay, on the job that you did with these contours and everything. So, I have no other questions right now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just to reiterate the other board members, there's a lot of comments from the different agencies that, you know, it'd be challenging to me. I'm sure you're up for it. And I'd also like to see a response from Grandview. On March 18th, they left off that it appears on the county map that this property does not have access to Byte Lane. Yeah, I'd like to see there another response to them next time we come back so we can see that everything is good with them at their end before we move this on to file. But that's my little comments, you know, a lot of stuff to work out and we'll see what the final plan looks like.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vine.
No, I have no additional questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this project?
Hello, this is Greg Pato. My wife and I own the property at 457 South Broadway.
Excuse me, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, this is Greg Pato, P-A-T-O. My wife and I own the property at 457 South Broadway. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I just have one concern, given the difficulty with the access to the property and what seems the discussion that you've been having here about whether there's an easement or an access to Byte Lane. Previously, on an old survey, old surveys, there had been an access from our property on 457 onto this property, which is 455 South Broadway. And that easement had been vacated. And our concern really is just about the building site and having, making sure that, you know, we don't have heavy equipment rolling across our property, basically, to make sure that there's a proper access to a street which appears to be Byte Lane, but as you had indicated, may not have actual access because of that small portion at the end of Byte Lane between the property. We would just want to be assured that the access was appropriate to Byte Lane and that we wouldn't be unduly disturbed.
Okay, thank you, sir. I know that the applicant is going to have to show some type of legal documentation that would allow them to have that access. Otherwise, property's landlocked and they won't be able to proceed. So, that will definitely, you know, be the case where they would have to present that legal document.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pato is correct. There was a right-of-way. It's shown along the westerly boundary of this site plan, and it has been terminated by a document that's referred to on here, just for reference. But we also have to provide, Mr. Pato, it appears it's the sanitary service for the Pato property traverses the westerly portion of this site. And we're showing that we are going to be granting an easement over the existing line or relocating it if needed, but we have to provide an easement so that there's something to allow that to continue. But going back to the access issue, we reference in the, at the location where Mr. Dell was talking about at the northeast corner of the property, there's a recitation on the site plan. You have it in front of you. And it indicates that Perry, as I mentioned before, owns this property and one time owned Garrity's property to the east, reserved an easement for all purposes in Libra 1040, page 703, from Byte Lane and any extension thereof to the west side of the premises of Perry. That was obviously, otherwise, if they hadn't kept that, they would have been landlocked. So, I can assure Mr. Pato that all construction traffic associated with the development of this property as a single-family home will come through Byte Lane and not affect his property.
Thank you for your assurance.
Okay. Anybody else in the public have any questions or comments on this? Okay, one more time. Anybody from the public wish to make any comments on this project? Okay, hearing none, now ask for a motion to close the public. Mr. Andrews. Okay, I believe Mr. Andrews made the motion to close the public session. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mandel seconds.
Mr. Mandel seconds. Thank you, sir. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to closing the public session? No, okay. Hey, what do you want to do with this, guys? Tell me on this one. Do you want to give them preliminary, let them move on, or what do you want to do? I know there's a lot of questions. Mr. Dell has a lot of concerns. I think a lot of these are addressable. Mr. Dell. Mr. Dell, go ahead.
Yes, I think my concerns could very easily be addressed on this if we follow what Mr. Greenwell said, is that no construction or site disturbance is to take place within five feet of any property line except near the driveway. Then that would take care of that, and I think that would be fairly clear, that if Mr. Greenwell agrees with that, maybe he can nod.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Does other board members have any concerns? Okay, can I have a motion for lead agent? Mr. Young makes a motion for lead agent. Do I have a second? Mr. McCory makes a second. Okay, all in favor for lead agent?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, I see no opposition. Okay, a motion for neg.
Motion for neg, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion for neg. Do I have a second for neg? Mr. Young makes a second for neg. All in favor for neg?
Aye.
Any opposed? I see no opposition. Okay. Do we want to go ahead with preliminary? Mr. Young, okay, Mr. Dell agrees. Okay, a motion for preliminary with conditions.
Motion for preliminary with conditions, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel makes the motion. Okay, conditions are, PRC has one. Jane Slavin, March 29th, Office of Building Zone and Planning. On the March 29th letter has five. Office of Building Zone and Planning, May 18th letter has four. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, March 26th. As 25. Office, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, May 10th. As 16. Booker Engineering, May 24th. As 7. Bureau of Fire Prevention Town of Orange Town, March 26th, as one. Rockland County Department of Planning, March 18th. Five. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, March 25th, as two. Orange and Rockland, March 15th. Village of Grandview on the Hudson, March 18th, has three. New York State Department of Transportation, March 15th, their letter, and that's all I have. Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no construction is to take place within five feet of any property line except in the immediate proximity of the driveway, and this will be dimensioned on the plan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have that? Jay, do you have that? Okay, thank you. Cheryl, all right? I hope she didn't leave us. Okay, I assume she does, but Jay said he'll do it anyway, so that's not a problem.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, do I have a second?
Young seconds.
Mr. Young seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't see any opposition. Okay, Jay, you got your preliminary.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Be safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that you again, Jay?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And before we start, I just want to let you know that that was the hard.
Try to do good work.
Thank you.
It's a group effort with everyone.
Yep.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Jeff.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, we prepared a number of photographs of surrounding properties and an exhibit showing the areas of the surrounding properties as well as the approximate FAR, some of the exact FAR that we obtained from foiling the records. But Jane, are you, there we go. This is, you want, can you pull up the photographs in one, two, three order?
I'll tell you, you're getting a little pushy there, Mr.
I'm sorry. It's easier for you, though. You have the, you have control. Okay, this is the.
That's number one.
Okay, perfect. This is the Gensel House directly south of the property in question. This shed is on the property that George Latzus is looking to buy and looking to build a house on, and that shed would be removed. Number two is the front of the house from Scotty Lane. You can see two-story with the full dormers on the front and the back. The third photograph is to the southeast of the site. We're going around the block. This is, this is 146 Park. It's actually the house that the owners of these two lots lived in for up until about two, I don't know, the father, Paul Prisco, built this house in the 50s, and they grew up here, and they owned the two lots for 65 years. The two lots that are the subject of the application this evening. Number four photograph is 152 Park. This is on a 5,000-square-foot lot and has an FAR of about .4, .45, not even counting FAR of about .4, .45, not even counting the shed in the back. Number five is the house northeast of the site at 156 Park, which in a moment you'll see the rendering of the house that we're proposing, very similar, high ranch, very similar to what we're proposing. This has an FAR of about .24. Number six is the house on the northernmost block, right two lots away from this one. This is a 10,000 square foot lot with variances from the ZBA, a floor area ratio of .34. This actually has an accessory apartment on the second floor over the garage. Number seven is the house to the immediate north of the site, this is Five Bergen, again showing the front of the house, which is on 10,000 square feet, just like this one. And number eight is the back of this house, sewing a deck very similar to what is being proposed, and almost in line with what is being proposed on this property. Now if you could pull up that area exhibit that you had pulled up first, Jane, that would be great. The area exhibit that we prepared shows all the lots in the, thank you, that's great. The bold area in the middle of the site is the surprise site in question, that's a 10,000 square foot lot. We started with the photos directly south of that with the Gensel Lot, then to the southeast, which was the 146 Park where the Priscos originally settled and grew up in, then to the north is a 5,000 square foot lot, then we kept on going north, and then there's the two family with the accessory apartment over the garage, that's a 10,000 square foot lot, and then next door at Five Bergen, and you can see the configuration of the lots and the size of the houses, you can see that many of these are extremely close to the lot line, and these are taken from aerial photogrammetry that was provided by the county. Many of these are closer than we are, we're not asking for side yard variance, the only area we're asking, variance we're asking for in terms of the bulks is the deck that is very similar to Five Bergen to the north. The board has received a letter from the owner of the property describing the history of their family in this area, and how they've owned this lot for 65 years, now the father built the 146 Park Avenue house in the 50s, the surviving sisters sold that house in 2018, and now are selling the property that George Latzus is looking to build on. We're committed to resolving the issues that have been raised in the consultants' memos, but we've heard some complaints from the neighbors, and in fact, some members of the board who were against the project. Now I wonder how they would feel if their family had held on to a vacant lot next to their family residence, hoping to pass it on to their children as part of their legacy, paid taxes on it for 65 years, expecting to be able to build a home on the same size lot as theirs as their neighbors, at about the same size configuration as the lots on their neighbors, only to find that people objecting to their rights as landowners and taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, let me go through the consultant's reports. Project review has one comment. Okay, Office of Buildings and Planning, Jane Slaven, May 18th, she has five comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Orange Town, May 10th. They have four comments, I'm sorry. Major Consulting, February 24th. The above comments represent our professional opinion and judgment, but may not necessarily in all cases reflect the opinion of the planning board. Overall, the proposed stormwater management plan meets the intent of the regulations, and therefore we recommend that each subdivision of land for, at least, be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are seven. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, January 29th. This parcel was outside of our jurisdiction. Okay, Rockland County Department of Health, May 24th, they have two. I have a letter, O and R, dated May 4th, that says O and R does not have gas service feeding the property. I have a letter from, oh goodness gracious, I gotta get in trouble. I will, I, I'm absolutely terrible with that, let me just spell the names, please. M U R I C K O L I L S E A P P E N and A L E Y K U T T Y C E A P P E N, they are on 416 White Oak Road in Palisades. Okay, I also have a letter dated, excuse me for a second, 526, from Terrace Fox and Helena Power, they're on 152 Park Avenue. Okay, I have a letter from Rockland County Highway Department, 56, consenting into town in Orange Town Planning Board to be lead agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway Department on 56, this project is outside of our jurisdiction. I have a letter from Rockland County Health, dated 524, consenting to town in Orange Town Planning Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Health, dated 524, comments attached. I have a letter from Orange Town ZBA, dated 55, consenting Orange Town Planning to be Lead Agent. I have another letter from Orange Town ZBA, 55, no comments this time. And I have the short EAF. Cheryl, did I miss anything?
You got everything, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate Mr. Greenwell's real estate comps in that area. Yeah, we're here to make sure that the land is going to be developed in accordance with the area, and I'm surprised it's not a critical environmental area, given all the water, but I don't have any other comments besides what I've just said.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mandel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one question, the DME's one, is it possible to connect the sanitary connection to the Scotty Avenue?
Bruce Peters had asked us to look into that, we sent the field crew out to get the invert, it is not deep enough to run the sewer line at 2% pitch, and what he indicated as an alternate was to provide a note that there should be nothing in the basement, and there isn't going, no sinks, no water supply, no drains, and in fact, this is going to be a slab on grade, so there won't be any basement, so he just wants us to put that note on to make sure that there is no basement, and there's no facilities in the basement.
Thank you, no further at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Sweeney?
Sorry about that, no, I have no extra comments this time.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Dell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've seen lots like this before, and usually when that happens, one thing we do insist upon is some sort of evergreen screening around the perimeters, but it concerns me most is the house. How many square foot is that house, Jay?
I'm gonna defer to George, and you know what, I forgot to show you the rendering of the proposed house, so Jane, could you pull up that rendering, and then George, if you could answer that question? That'd be great. Perfect, thank you.
Hello, everybody, thank you very much for listening to our presentation here. The house that we're proposing to build is about 3,000 square feet in total square footage, that also includes the garage, you know, in Orange Town, they count that as living space, so the garage is roughly around 500 square feet or so, and we've made that to that size to avoid putting any extra structures outside, so we made it a garage with storage inside for lawn mowers and things like that, instead of having, you know, multiple sheds on the property, we just confined it all to one structure. The one thing I just wanted to bring up to the board's attention, and everybody in the neighborhood, is first, I've been working and building in this town for over 20 years, I live in this town, and I take a great deal of pride in what we do. I've been in front of this board before, and I'm currently finishing a project that you guys approved on Mercury Drive just last year, so thank you for doing a good job, and, you know, keeping the neighborhood as beautiful as it is. But the one thing that we're all missing the point on in this, in this property is that these are two legal, pre-existing, non-conforming lots, which means by right, two small houses could be built on each one of these lots. Now, when I was interviewed by the Priscos, we went back and forth, and we tried to figure the best approach for the neighborhood, because they grew up in the neighborhood, and they care for it just as much as I do. So legally, two single houses can be built there. If we would have went that route, we would have avoided coming to the planning board, we would not need any drainage review, because it'd be under 5,000 square foot lots each. So by merging it together, we felt that we'd have less impact for the neighborhood, less traffic, less runoff, and just an overall better harmony for the neighborhood. If you look at the exhibit that Jay prepared, a lot of these houses, especially the one on 152 Park, is 50 by 100, and is almost 50% of the square footage of the lot. So looking at Five Bergen, it's a carbon copy of what they have there, as far as the house and square footage. So I truly feel we're keeping in character with what's there, and minimizing the impact of the construction.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but since we're dealing with anecdotal evidence, well, my mother-in-law unfortunately passed about a year or two ago.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, so are we, but what's relevant here is that was a older home, it was on 2,000 square feet lot area, but the house itself was 1,000 square. You're asking for a 50% reduction of the amount of size, and throwing on a 3,000 square foot house, which I personally believe is out of scale on this by probably 2%. And another thing that could be done to this as an alternative, is to just don this just a single rather than floors, and then a lot of people would be a lot happier, it would be less encroachment in the area, and it'd be more future. Now, I understand that quite a few things are pushed in there, but I'm uncomfortable with putting 3,000 square foot house on a 10,000 square foot lot. So those are my comments, I would also like to hear what the people have to say in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mandel. Mr. Andrews?
I was wondering if you could put that picture up of the house that has the apartment in it, over the double car garage next to the rendition house?
Whoever GA is, you have your microphone on, will you please turn it off, we're getting feedback? Thank you.
Let me tell you something, this renditioned house that is, that you're planning on building looks 20 times better than this house that you just put up. I don't see a problem with this at all. That house has got to be 70 feet long, if I'm not mistaken, and this house is what, about 40, the new one? I think, I like the, I like the new house, I don't see a problem with putting it up on a 10,000 square foot lot. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of things to point out, we had a similar situation not too long ago on Park Avenue, where we combined lots, the whole area has undersized lots, and Jay pointed out nicely to compare, I appreciate that. But what we did see with the other lot is that we had the guy keep as much, as many trees for screening for the neighbors, and I think what this plan is lacking, it was pointed out earlier too about landscaping plans, to, so while you build this house, you get screened for the neighbors, I see the trees that you're taking away, I don't see anything that you're adding to help out with the screening and protect the neighbors like we did around the corner. Also, you're at 30% FAR, it requires 20%, I'd like to see something meet in the middle there, like you said, 3,000 square feet on 10,000 square feet lot, it's, I'd like to see something maybe uncompromised down the middle, but definitely landscaping more, and how many trees are you proposing to take out off this property? I didn't count them, but I guess, see if you got a number?
We're gonna take as little as possible, obviously, you know, sorry, Jay, I apologize. We want to minimize the trees that are removed. Of course, the more mature trees that you leave, the nicer the house looks, it kind of keeps a presence of something that's been there, not necessarily like a brand-new, you know, structure, so we want to take down as little as possible.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't have the number that you're taking down?
I do, I do, Mr. McCory.
Thank you.
The lot is mostly lawn right now, and if you go back to that first photograph that we showed, looking at the shed, most of that is lawn, looking right through to the Gensel property, the back of the house, other than that dilapidated shed. There are only about four trees of any size that are being taken out, per the five trees, I'm sorry. The trees around the perimeter of the property are to remain. The, there are one, two, three, four sizable oaks, 32, 36 inch oaks along the north property line, 20 and 24 inch maple along the east property line, another 18 inch maple, a 10 foot, I don't know what, a 10 inch poplar, I guess, hold on, let me see what it is, PO, poplar, yep, along the south property line, a 14 inch twin maple, so the only, the only four trees that are being taken down are in the front of the house and where the driveway is. And dry wells for the stormwater mitigation.
All right, and no additional landscaping screen in proposed?
Well, we, you know, we haven't gotten that far, you know, this has to go to the zoning board of appeals, and then to the architecture review board, so the, we have no objection to providing some additional landscaping.
All right, I just want to get that on the record, those are my only comments, I'd like to hear what the public has to say as well, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I have, I have no issues with the house, I mean, it's, if you factor the garage out, it's maybe 25, 26 other square feet tops, so it's not, by today's standard, that's not a overbearing home, so I have no issues with it, so.
Thank you, sir. Okay, but open it up to the public, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this?
Hello, yes, this is Terry Fox, 152 Park Avenue.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so I'm right behind that lot, yeah, just a couple points, so you, I guess you read my letter, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
I mentioned to her, mentioned.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, okay, no, I just wanted to make sure, you did read the letter, okay, I think the point, you know, which they did leave out of their presentation, which is lovely pictures of my house, thanks a lot, that's great. This neighborhood, unlike typical neighborhood in Orange Town, the entire neighborhood, 40-plus homes are all on wells, okay? Every street, there's five streets, you got Morningside Broad, Park, Bergen, and West Maroni, are all undedicated private roads, so, and they don't get any services. The drainage is horrific. When it rains, that lot, you can walk through, up to your ankles, and water. Okay, I've looked at it for 27 years, that, if you could imagine the bottom of a ball at it for 27 years. That, if you can imagine the bottom of a ball, that is the bottom of the ball. And then what you want to do, the proposal is then to upgrade, I don't know how many hundreds of yards of fill, they have to fill up to put a two-story, 3,000 square foot house. Well, if you want to argue about the garage in or out, but it's still a pretty significant amount of impervious surface on top of large trees that have to be cut down. So if you go and look at that lot, there may be not be numerous trees, but look at the size of those trees. And then add to the impervious surfaces that are going to be put on, that is going to have a significant impact. And again, when you have stormwater runoff, excavation, there's, and then you're going to drop another well, right? You're going to drop another well down there, which you dropped another well down on Park Avenue on a substandard lot. There's a limited resource. The RC DOH, they're going to provide guidance on the proper well installation. They check quality of water, but guess what? When the well runs dry, it's over. There's no more water. Now the neighbors, that all falls to the neighbors. The road damage falls to the neighbors. The house built, being built on Park, we're at the mercy, hopefully, of the builder, building down there, that he's going to repair the road, that the procession of trucks being ripped up to build a large house down there. The same thing's going to happen on Bergen. The roads are going to get ripped up. Where does that fall to? That falls to the neighbors. So when Mr. Greenwell and the other gentleman are showing pictures as if this is just similar to any other neighborhood in Rockland, Orange Town, that is not telling the whole story. Okay. So, and I think some of the board members have been down there. They've seen it. Obviously, I think somebody mentioned already how it's not an environmentally sensitive area, but stop down there after a couple of days of rain, and where all this is going to go. And I guess, you want 3,000 square foot, and by the way, you're showing the 70 foot house, which is on Maroni, that is not adjacent to this. There's five houses that touch this property and none of them are close to this size. None of them. Nothing close to 3,000 square feet. So it is well above and beyond the immediate characteristics of that one area, notwithstanding the 40 other homes in the area that are on wells. So, yeah, I said, basically, that's, those are my comments. And I put some other comments in writing, so you have those. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Can I just say that I've been there after rainstorms multiple times, obviously, since I'm purchasing it? I want to see what I'm buying as well. And after looking into it, there was water mitigation that took place under the White Oak Development. And I don't see any water problems on that property. Obviously, I wouldn't be buying it and I wouldn't want to develop it if, if it was, because what good would it be if I couldn't sell it? You know what I mean? Or if there was that much mortar, what good, I wouldn't be able to develop it. It cost me so much more to build on it. You know what I mean? So I do understand the gentleman's concern. I'm sympathetic and sensitive. We're going to be there for a few months if this gets passed. So we don't want to butt heads. We don't want to fight with anybody. We want to build a nice house and just leave gracefully. You know what I mean? Like we've done many times in this area.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else in the public that wish to have any questions or comments on this application? Okay, one more time. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public? Andrew's motion for public. Okay, I got, Mr. Andrews makes the motion, and I believe Mr. Mandell makes the second, if I'm correct. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no opposition. Okay. Okay. Do any of the board members have any more questions? Okay, Mr. Del?
Yes, I just want to, all the other board members are comfortable with putting a 3,000 foot, square foot house on a 10,000 square foot lot. I mean, it's nothing I've seen in this area. And, you know, my views on it, but I just want to make sure the other board members are comfortable with that. And if they are, okay. And if they're not, we'll let that something else. Proper also.
Okay. Okay, let's, I don't know what you guys want to do, but let's just try. I have a motion for lead agent.
Motion for lead agent, Mr. Mandell.
Okay, Mr. Mandell makes a motion for lead agent. Well, I have a second.
Andrew's seconds.
Andrew's second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion for neg deck? Mr. Young makes a motion for young, uh, neg deck. Do I have a second?
Andrew's seconds.
Andrew's second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? I think Mr. Del opposes to the, okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mandell.
Mr. Mandell also, okay. Everybody else? Okay, Mr. Mandell and Mr. Mandell opposed to the neg deck. Okay. Do we want to give them preliminary so they can move on? Then I have a motion for preliminary. Mr. Young makes a motion for preliminary with conditions. And the conditions are, PRC has one, Office of Building Zoning and Planning, Jane Slaven, May 18th. Five, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, May 10th, has four. Mazer Consulting, February 24th, has seven comments. Department of Planning, Rocket County, Department of Planning, January 29th, says this parcel was outside their jurisdiction. Rocket County Health, May 24th, they have two comments. I have a letter from O and R on May 4th. And again, I have two letters concerned from the neighborhood pertaining to this project. Okay, do I have a second?
Andrew's seconds.
Mr. Andrew's second. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Del, I believe opposes?
Mr. Mandell.
Oppose?
Yeah, we, we never, you never let us talk about the, if we were comfortable with the 3,000 square foot lot, you went right to the vote. So.
I was asking for discussion, kind of asking for discussion on it, where you guys wanted to go. And nobody said anything. I know Mr. Del said something, Mr. Mandell said something, and nobody else did.
All right, I'll stick to my vote.
Which what? Which is what?
Opposed.
You opposed. Okay, so that's three people, Mr. Del, Mr. Mandell, Mr. McCory. Does anybody else oppose? Okay, so I say aye. So that's four aye and three opposed. Is that what I hear? Okay. Thank you. So Jay, you got your preliminary?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great Memorial Day.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
Don't anybody go anywhere yet.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good weekend.
Okay, good Memorial Day, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Be well.
Jane, can you get rid of the screen? Okay, I don't know if anybody's been over to the building department, but they had that screen all set up. And I think they're kind of itching for us to get back in-person meetings. So I want to discuss it with the board, see how everybody feels about it.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, we, we worked it out that we can have the ones in June up at Town Hall, which is a larger meeting place.
Okay. So let's go down the roll call. Mr. Young, how do you feel about it?
I'm ready to return, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mandell?
Sooner the better.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
I prefer to return to live meetings.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Del, you want to get out of your bed? Oh, you're at it.
Nah, I kind of like it up here. Thanks. First of all, the other members agree, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm still just overly cautious. There may be some people who'll be reticent to come still at this ancient time, and I don't want to keep anybody from I wonder if we could keep the online ability for people to, in the meeting. Is that a possibility?
If I may interject, of course, we are, we have to follow the governor's, you know, regulations. And I know Rick can probably speak to this, but I, I think he's opening everything up. So sooner or later, the option to meet virtually is going to be eliminated. And to try it, to do it, Bob is just almost impossible for me to manage. Like, to manage a remote, someone remote coming into our meetings, our meetings are way too complicated. The town board has been doing it for months now, as the zoning board also has been. So while our meeting, some of them are a bit larger, we do have the option of using Town Hall, and that's what we're going to do in June. The town board has had a few meetings that were very large and they were managed properly. So I, I think we need to follow their protocol moving forward and hope that everything stays positive. Obviously, if things change and things start to revert backwards, we, we'd have to reevaluate. But at this point, Cheryl has worked very hard at setting up meetings in the Town Hall for July 9th, or I'm sorry, June 9th and the 30th, Cheryl, if I get the dates right?
Yes, the schedule says June 23rd, but we need to change it to June 30th.
What are the July scheduled meetings?
July 14th and July 28th.
July 28th?
28th, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, I should be back for that. I have an operation in Texas on the 21st. Okay, thank you.
So the town board met on Tuesday in person with the new mandates. They were still six feet apart. The chairs were set up six feet apart. But you didn't have to wear your mask if you're vaccinated. If whatever everybody feels comfortable with is what you should do. And we'll, we'll do our best to spread out. And I just, I just think we really, we really need to take that next step at this point. We're really the last board that's left. And granted, we do have a larger crowd than mo, most of the time than most of the other boards, but at this point, the governor could, and I think, Rick, I forget the date. Is it June 16th or something like that, where he, he could say, that's it, we're done. So we have to plan for that so that we're not scrambling to, to reschedule meetings and leaving people in the lurch to, are we virtual or are we not virtual? So we have to send out the notices and everything for the next meeting has to go out by Friday.
Okay. No problems then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Andrews?
That's about freaking time to go back.
Mr. McCory?
Yeah, I'm good to go back if everybody else is. Can I just write down those dates for June again? I wasn't ready for that.
June 9th is the next meeting. And then June 30th.
30th is the change. Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Yeah, I'm good with going back.
Okay, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, very good. So we all kind of agree. Because my question was, what happens if one of the members says, no, I'm not going to do it? What do we do? But I think everybody here is smart enough to realize that we, we can do it, we can be safe, and we can do it, and, and everything is going to be fine.
Right. And Tom, Tom, to follow up with what you started to say, I'm sorry that I interrupted you, is we, we did gain approval to get a screen, a smart board for the Greenbush Auditorium, so I can put stuff up on a screen, much like we do up in Town Hall Meeting Room. So that will allow for the public to see the drawings on a board without having to approach the dais, basically. So we did do that. It's, it's set up. And, you know, it was a big purchase and it's really going to help us moving forward. So I guess we'll probably start using that in the fall. So we're ready, you know, to start that. And hopefully, this transition will be smooth. And, you know, by September, fingers crossed, everything's back to normal.
And I think with that board too, that a lot of the board members, we're not going to have to, everybody's not going to have to open up a set of plans. We can, you know, view everything off the screen and get whatever information we need for that. So I think that will work out good. Anything else other than, I know we have to do the minutes, but is there anything else?
We're meeting in the old courtroom, so I have to pull down screen like the old, the old-fashioned way? Yeah. Right. So the reason we're meeting in the old courtroom is it, it's probably about 10 feet bigger in depth than the Greenbush Auditorium. So it'll allow for, you know, maybe two more rows of chairs versus the Greenbush. We did do PRC last Wednesday, which worked out well, but the PRC for tonight's meeting filled the room. Social distancing. So Cheryl and I looked at that and said, all right, you know what? Let's do the next meeting in the larger courtroom just to be safe. And every week, this is evolving and hopefully it keeps going in the positive direction.
Mr. Del?
Yes. We be going back to live broadcasting? Are we going to keep it as we are?
What, what do you mean live broadcast? We don't, we don't like.
We used to have the planning board on, on 31 live, didn't we?
Oh.
No, it was the day after. Okay, that's all right. It was a couple of days. I don't know if it was a day, it was a couple of days after. It wasn't the same day. Okay.
Yeah, not since I've been here, if we've never been live. So I don't.
Oh, okay. You made a fool of yourself. But I think all the ones down the, the, your building department building would never live. Yeah, they were always taped.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else? For airtime, but you know, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, now we can't turn off our cameras and take a nap.
I still have to say that this, this planning board, I think, broke records. No other planning board did what you guys did. So be proud. You should all have a glass of champagne right now and.
You don't stand a, oh, I gotta start wearing pants again.
No bunny slippers, Tom. Nobody slippers anymore.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of, um, May 12? Uh, Mr. Mandell makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Sweeney makes the second. Do all in favor, aye. Any opposed? I need a motion to close this beautiful meeting.
I think we have Mr. Mandell be in slow motion at all meetings from now on.
Yeah, I know. Like, your hand is frozen. Listen, I want everybody, everybody to have a very happy and healthy Memorial Day weekend. All right? Eat a lot, wrinkle up, and be safe. All right, do I have a motion?
Everybody, have a great one.
Okay, Mr. Young? Sweeney's seconds. All in favor, aye.
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 Be good, be safe.